Okay, good morning. The fifth regular meeting on the Committee on Health is now called to order. May we all stand for the opening prayer?
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty Father, thank you for this new day. We thank you for this opportunity for us to gather together once more to discuss matters that will result to your people's well-being. Enlighten us and guide us. Open our minds and hearts as we come up with the best decisions that will improve the lives of our fellow Filipinos. Send us your wisdom, patience, and compassion. All this we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, amen.
Thank you, Diane. Do I hear a motion to defer the...
Mr. Chair. Yeah, if we could dispense with the calling, the role.
They can use the chair.
There's a motion to dispense with the calling of the role. Julie seconded, the motion is carried.
Mr. Chair, I...
Kong Dalog.
Move for the dispensation of the reading of the minutes and likewise move for the approval of the same.
Second, Mr. Chair. There's a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the approval of the same. And Julie seconded. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. At this point, we'd like to... We'd like to acknowledge the presence of the members of the committee. With here this morning, physically present, we have Honorable David J.J. Suarez, Deputy Majority Leader of the Second District of Quezon. Honorable Maximo Dalog Jr. of the Lone District of Mountain Province. Honorable Ray Florent Reyes, Vice Chairman, Alang Kalusugan. On Zoom, we have Honorable Yevgeny Vincente Imano of the Second District of Misamis Oriental. Honorable Anthony Rolando Gómez Jr., Vice Chair, Malasakit Partilist. Honorable Carmelo John Lasatín, Vice Chair, First District of Pampanga. Honorable Rodolfo Ompong Ordanes of the Senior Citizens Partilist. Honorable Journey Jet Nissay of Usong Pinoy Partilist. Honorable Eleanor Bulot Begtang of the Lone District of Apayao. Honorable Iolojio Rodriguez of the Lone District of Catanduanes. Honorable Joseph Jojo Lara from the Third District of Cagayan. Honorable Keith Maica Attorney Maica Tan, Vice Chair, from the Fourth District of Quezon. Honorable Maria Lucille Nava of the Lone District of Gimaras. Honorable Salvador Prieto of the Sixth District of Bulakan. Honorable Agustina Dominic Dichetina Pancho of the Second District of Bulakan. Honorable Larni Lavín Roque of the Fourth District of Bukidnon. Honorable Charisse Ann Hernandez of the Lone District of Calamba City. Honorable Ruth Mariana Hernandez of the Second District of Laguna. Honorable Junior of the First District, Tagig Pateros. Honorable Dante Garcia of the Second District of La Unión. Honorable Daphne Lagun, Vice Chair of Aku Bisaya Partilist. Honorable Luz Mercado, First of the First District of Southern Leyte. Honorable Fernando Cabredo of the Third District of Albay. Honorable Romulo Kid Peña Jr. of the First District of Makati City. Honorable Bonifacio Bosita of the One Rider Partilist. And Honorable Felimon Esparres of Natco Partilist. Thank you very much for your presence this morning. I know how difficult it is to start this early. May we request Comsec to introduce our resource persons?
Good morning, Chair, the honorable members of the committee. In attendance this morning are the following resource persons. From the Department of Health, Dr. Maria Teresa G. Vera, Director of the Health Facility Development Bureau, and Dr. Melissa Sena of the same office. From the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Nihal Abdul-Rauf, the Acting Chief Budget and Management Specialist, and Mr. Justin Buser of the same office. From the Bangi District Hospital, Dr. Elvin Chester Alcoriza, the Chief of Hospital. Ms. Raquel Rayoan, the Administrative Officer of the same hospital, and Ms. Nora Manligas. From the Toribyo Memorial Hospital, Dr. Josephine Habonilio, the Chief of Hospital. From the Tudoro Galagar District Hospital, Dr. Lina Sero, the Chief of Hospital. That would be all for now, Your Honor.
Thank you, Comsec. Also, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Mark Go from the Lone District of Baguio City. Okay, allow me to read a short opening statement. Good morning, distinguished colleagues and esteemed guests. First in our agenda this morning are bills authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of all hospitals under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health and providing funds therefore. As the title of the bill clearly indicates, allowing the DOH to determine the increase in beds of all hospitals under its direct supervision and control, which carries with it the necessary human resource and facilities, would greatly improve timely delivery of health services. Such increase in the bed capacity of the Department of Health hospitals, however, shall be subject to the Health Facility Development Plan, which the DOH shall submit to Congress in order to access capital outlay investment through the Health Facilities Enhancement Program of the Department of Health and other national government capital outlay investment mechanisms. Without further ado, the Chair would now recognize the authors of the bill as follows. House Bill Number 288 by Congressman Mike Tan. House Bill 444 by Honorable Maximo Dalog Jr. House Bill 975 by Representative Honorable Mark Go. House Bill Number 1565 by Representatives Luis Raymond L. Villaferte Jr., Miguel Luis Villaferte, Chuyoshi, Anthony Goribata, and Nicolas N. Ciso VIII. And House Bill Number 5804 by Honorable Patrick Michael Vargas. The Chair would now call the authors of the bill for their sponsorship. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Deputy Minority Leader, Honorable Mujeev Hataman. Thank you. The Chair would now recognize the author of House Bill Number 288, Honorable Keith Maica Attorney Maica Tan. Honorable Tan, you're now recognized.
If you care, your honors, distinguished guests, and resource persons. Maganda umaga po. The DOH hospital's profile reveals that three out of four hospitals have bed occupancy rate beyond its licensed authorized bed capacity. In 2020, the total licensed beds of DOH-run hospitals amount to 22,773, while implementing beds amount to 27,019. In 2019, the DOH hospitals admit 30,309 patients daily and discharge attempts of its total daily inpatients. The overall bed occupancy rate of all hospitals is beyond the total licensed beds at 131%. Out of the 721 public hospitals, 70 are managed by the DOH, and the well-being of those who go to these hospitals depend upon the capacity of such. Hence, the number of hospital beds is a good indicator of health service availability in hospitals. According to the WHO, there should be 20 bed hospital beds per 10,000 population. Currently increasing the bed capacity of hospitals requires legislation. House Bill 288, which was approved by the House and transmitted to the Senate during the 18th Congress, seeks to address the congestion of patients in public hospitals by giving authority to the DOH to adjust and approve the authorized bed capacities and corresponding service capabilities of its retained hospitals. Through this proposal, efficient delivery of health services could be achieved through a streamlined process of approving changes in the authorized bed capacities and corresponding service capabilities of DOH hospitals. It is for these reasons that approval of this measure is earnestly sought. Salamat po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Tan. We would like to recognize the presence of Honorable Doris Manikis of the Second District of Sambales. Thank you. We now proceed to House Bill Number 444. Honorable Maximo Dalog is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honorable Chairperson June Gato, the Vice Chairpersons and members of this committee, my dear colleagues, our guests from the Department of Health, ladies and gentlemen, Gawisa Agau Takwamin. Pleasant day to all of us. House Bill 444 seeks to change the current system where increase in bed capacity of DOH retained hospitals can only be done through legislation. By authorizing the DOH to adjust and approve increase in bed capacities and corresponding service capabilities of hospitals, it will expedite the process and ensure the availability of hospital beds and accessibility of health services to all regions in the country. In view of the foregoing, approval of this measure is earnestly sought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Dalog. We now proceed to House Bill Number 975 by Honorable Mark Go. Honorable Mark Go, you're now recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to our Chair, of course, and our distinguished colleagues, as well as our resource persons. Thank you for including this proposed measure in today's agenda of this committee, Mr. Chair. It's my honor to sponsor House Bill 975, an act authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH hospitals for the entire country. I'd like to note also at the outset that this bill has been approved on third and final reading during the last Congress, and it went to the Senate, but due to lack of material time, this bill was not enacted into law. Consistent with the National Health Policy, Republic Act 11223, otherwise known as the Universal Healthcare Act, is enacted, was enacted in 2019 to ensure that all Filipinos are guaranteed access to quality and healthcare services. The Department of Health, in its effort to realize the provisions of the UHC, has developed the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan 2020 to 2020 to 40, which is a macro plan for the development of health facilities in the entire country. According to the plan, the projected demand for hospital beds by year 2040, based on the burden of disease and population growth, is about 2.7% or 2.7 beds per 1,000 population. However, with our current supply of 109,647 beds, there is a huge estimated gap of more than 380,000 hospital beds. Currently, as we know, those DOH hospitals can only increase their bed capacity through legislation, which poses limitations in increasing hospital beds in the country real time. Thus, there is a need to allow the Department of Health to administratively determine and approve the bed capacity of DOH hospitals so that these hospitals can expand as necessary without waiting for another legislation. Granting the DOH the authority to determine and approve the bed capacity and service capability of existing government hospitals is critical in providing appropriate and accessible healthcare for all Filipinos. Again, I would like to seek the approval of this body on this measure, Mr. Chair, and hopefully this time it will be enacted into law. Thank you and good morning.
Thank you, Honorable Mark Go. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence via Zoom of our Vice Chair, Honorable Christine Alexis Chutor of the Third District of Bohol. May we now call Representative from DOH, Director Maria Teresa Vera for the... for their comments.
Good morning, and thank you, your honorable Chair. The Department of Health fully supports House Bill 444 and 288 first, 288, House Bills 444 and 1565, House Bill 975, and House Bill 5804. So, that, those bills seek to streamline the efficient processing and approval of the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH hospitals. Actually, there are instances wherein the DOH operates beyond its authorized bed capacity, resulting to overwork staffing, poor maintenance, and burden in the operating resources of the DOH hospital. As such, there is a need to expedite the process of improving the capacity and capability of the DOH hospitals. So, once again, the DOH reiterates its full support to this measure, seeking to authorize the DOH to approve the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH hospital. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you very much, Director Vera. From the Department of Budget and Management, Madam Nihal Abdul-Rauf, you're now recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning to the honorable members of the committee and all others as well, and the others as well. My name is Nihal Abdul-Rauf of the DBM Budget Information Legislative Service. Your Honor, we fully support the passage of the bills into law. Now, to ensure the consonance between the DBM and the DOH in relative to policies in evaluating organizational and staffing standards as well as funding requirements, we respectfully suggest, Your Honor, to include a statement under Section 3 of the substitute bill after the first paragraph stating as such, "The DOH shall coordinate with the DBM relative to the organizational and staffing standards as well as funding requirements for the upgrading of bed capacities of hospitals." That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Nihal. Any comment from any members of the committee?
Bill. Honorable Mark Go, you're now recognized. I would like to actually add an additional item in this proposal of mine to ensure that this is done efficiently and effectively by the Department of Health. I would like to provide a provision that there should be a timeline that should be done by the Department of Health. Let's say every five years, they should review these different hospitals as to whether they need more, because it might take long for them to do also the review. So, I think we will put a provision where to maintain regularity in the conduct of assessment and setting up of minimum number of beds should be done every five years, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mark Go. Reaction from the Department of Health?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We agree with the proposal of Congressman Go to put a sort of timelines relative to the review of DOH. But perhaps we can also request that if there is a need to increase already the bed capacity, especially that there are DOH hospitals are now, we are now putting up specialty centers in these DOH hospitals if we don't need to wait for five years if there is a need already to upgrade the hospital, to increase the bed capacity. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yeah, that's even better. That immediately after the passage of this bill into law, they can immediately do the assessment, and if there is a need to immediately increase the bed capacity, then they can do so. But thereafter, every five years, they should do the evaluation and setting up, let's say, higher, not lower, of course, so higher bed capacity.
In other words, you don't have to wait for five years. It can be earlier than five years, but not more than five years, I guess. Honorable Go.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if I may, I just, if I may be allowed to ask a question from the DOH, technical question.
Before we proceed, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Maria Rachel Arenas, Vice Chair from the Third District of Pangasinan. Honorable Reyes, you're now recognized.
So, yeah, Mr. Chair, I guess for the appreciation of this committee, I know that the DOH has already conducted your assessment on the lacking bed capacities nationwide. Maybe for the appreciation of everybody around here, would you happen to have that information so that we may know the sense of urgency of this committee so that we may be able to, if possible, we could expedite the passage of this bill?
Director Vera?
Actually, I don't have the exact figure right now, but what I can tell is most of our DOH hospitals are implementing beds beyond what's mandated to them. So, but during the last 17th and 18th Congress, several DOH hospitals were given opportunity, were mandated to increase their bed capacity. If okay with Congressman Reyes, we will submit these hospitals, the number of hospitals, as to those exceeding the authorized, the mandated bed capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the reason why I pointed this out is because when we were discussing before, I guess for the appreciation of the committee, we, I think we did a sample before on the province of Batangas. And I think we, just in the province of Batangas alone, I think we have about 7,500 lacking beds. So, this gives you, at least for the authors, this gives you an appreciation of how immediate that we need to pass this. If Batangas alone is already lacking this amount of beds, if we look at it from a nationwide level, we have, we have to take this into consideration. And I believe, I hope that I enjoy in the Department of Budget and Management, that they take this into consideration also when we already plan our next budget, because we don't want that we are caught again with our pants down during another pandemic or any other health crisis wherein we do not have the sufficient bed capacities. And then we see all of our patients already being treated in parking lots in the driveways just because we do not have it. So, that's all, Mr. Chair, just for the appreciation of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Reyes. Please submit to the committee the data that Honorable Reyes is asking DOH.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Suarez.
I do welcome the bills, and I would like to congratulate the sponsors. In fact, in my experience as a local government executive, tama po 'yung sinabi nung resource personatin from DOH that a lot of our hospitals are actually operating beyond the number of beds that's allocated to them. Like, for example, when I was Governor of Quezon Province, our 200-bed capacity hospital... our two hundred bed capacity hospitals at any given time, hindi bababa po 'yun sa five hundred bed, five hundred patients ang ina-admit. Now, my question is, um, given that the authority will be provided to the DOH, what about the funding allocation to support the additional beds? Will this automatically be provided to them as well? Uh, with regards to, um, what the bill requires?
May, may I ask from one of the authors, Honorable Marco?
Well, it will still be within the budget of the DOH as approved by us, by Congress.
From what I under- understand, kasi Mr. Chair, is let's say assuming, uh, siguro DOH sa mga kapag danong, uh, how much does it cost to operate a bed?
DOH?
Per ano?
Actually, uh, the roughly, the operating expenses depends upon the number of beds. But if we look into a level three, just an example, a level three hospital, uh, with, uh, five hundred beds, it's around six hundred eighty million pesos already. Uh, we, for the DOH hospital, uh, when we propose their operating expenses, we have this, uh, formula we followed depending upon the number of beds, the, uh, their emergency room, uh, clients as well as the outpatient clients. However, unfortunately, sorry for DBM, but most of the time DBM cannot, uh, provide, uh, us the proposed budget that's being requested by the DOH hospitals. But hopefully, uh, eventually, uh, it will improve the MOE budget because that's the, uh, request of our DOH hospitals if budget for their operating expenses can be increased somehow. Thank you.
So if I may suggest, Mr. Chair, um, along with the proponents, of course, I would beg to their, um, better wisdom. Siguro maganda lagyan natin ng, uh, automatic appropriation na kaagad. Kasi we may give them the authority to increase the number of beds, but if we do not provide them the necessary funds to operate these beds, um, you know, it's a no-win situation for the hospitals. So, kung pwede lang, siguro, dadagdag, yun lang naman 'yung mukhahe ko na sana isama natin sa bill na may, may automatic appropriations to. Para sa ganon, matitiyak natin na pag dinagdagan natin 'yung bed capacity, uh, may assurance din tayo mula sa DBM, nalalagyan din to ng priority allocations when they do their proposal for, let's say, the next year and the following year's expenditure program. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, clarification. Thank you, uh, Honorable Suarez, uh,
Mr. Chair, just clarification. Yung sa point ni Kong Suarez, ang ibig sabihin ba nito pag automatic 'yung power ni DOH once na, na-meet 'yung parameters na siniset nila? Ibig sabihin nun without consulting DBM, automatic 'yung power nila? Or subject to submission nila, kung meron silang nakikita sa Congress for the next year proposal nila, yun lang 'yung iclarify natin, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Honorable Marco?
Ako ang tingin ko, after we give them the authority, they do the assessment and from there they decide kung ilan talaga. Then they will be the one to work out to increase the budget of this, uh, hospital. Kasi hindi pwedeng automatic appropriation nito, uh, and they will not be given the automatic power to disperse based on the decision on increasing the number of capacity. So you still have to work, uh, of, of the budget and bring it to Congress para masiguro natin, masuportahan ng Congresso. Yun, yun ang tingin ko, akong, uh,
So, so may I ask from one of the, any one of the authors about the, uh, proposal of, uh, Honorable Suarez on the, uh, automatic appropriation? Uh, not automatic?
Yeah, not automatic. Actually, I beg, I, I would, uh, beg to the better wisdom of Congressman Marco. It was just, um, one concern that I had, nah, if we do increase the bed, which of course I fully support, it would be, um, better achieved if funding would be, um, allocated towards, uh, the addition of those, uh, beds as well. But I think with the proposal of Congressman Marco as, uh, endorsed by Congressman Hataman, then I would beg to their better judgment. Kasi sila naman po 'yung mga sponsors nung dyan.
Okay.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Honorable Manikis?
Yes po. Mr. Chair, galing po kasi ako sa maliit na bayan sa Zambales. Meron po kaming sariling hospital municipally funded at ang difficulty po natin, kahit po magallow ang DOH na i-increase ang bed capacity, napakahirap naming i-provide 'yung personnel na requirement nila. So pwede bang medyo magkaroon tayo ng flexibility in terms of nurses, doctors? Kasi hindi kami nagagruntan basta ng mga permits to operate unless ma-satisfy namin. Eh, napakahirap kung i-satisfy especially now, grabe na 'yung, na, 'yung lucrative offers ng abroad, no? So pwede ho bat natin na medyo bawasan 'yung requirement niya in terms of nurses, medical doctors, while increasing bed capacity.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Are you referring, Honorable Manikis, to a LGU hospital or a DOH?
Sir, kahit na LGU or DOH.
All hospitals?
Yes po. Kasi sir,
Mr. Chair.
Especially sa mga government hospitals.
Uh, Honorable Marco?
I have an experience with our hospital, Yum Bagyo General Hospital. Uh, in our seventeenth Congress, we increased the bed capacity from five hundred to eight hundred. In the eighteenth Congress, uh, we approved and it was passed into law to make it one thousand five hundred. When we say increase in bed capacity, did, this would mean an increase not only in the infrastructure, but also the facilities, uh, 'yung mga nurses, doctors and all other related, uh, that's why I think tama 'yung tanong ni Kong JJ when he asked, magkano ba ang cost pag nagkaroon ka ng isang incremental, aliba, increase ng isang bed? So kasama na yun, total package eh. Hindi pwedeng magdagdag lang tayo ng bed, tapos walang doktor. Ay, useless 'yung bed kung walang, uh, auxiliary facilities needed to operate that hospital. So having said that, uh, kasama na yun, when you propose an increase in budget, uh, to answer also the question of Congresswoman Manikis, kasama dapat yun eh. Huwag niyo lang bigyan ng additional bed, tapos walang, walang, uh, budget for uh, other facilities needed by the hospital to operate and increase in the.
Just to clarify, when, what you are discussing here this morning is, are the hospitals under the DOH, not the LGU hospitals?
Yeah.
So, uh, Honorable Manikis, you were referring to an LGU hospital?
Yes po, sir. Pero it also concerns DOH-run hospitals. Kasi po 'yung personnel, meron silang prescription eh, for every bed, eto dapat ang mga number of personnels. So yun po 'yung policy nila. Eh, napakahirap na kung mag-recruit ng nurses ngayon. So kadalasan, kahit na gusto naming i-increase ang bed capacity, kanari po, LGU, may pondo kami to increase the bed capacity, wala naman kaming mahay na nurses, wala kaming mahay na doctors to comply with the requirements of DOH. So kung ma-aallow po tayo mag-increase ng bed capacity, kahit na DOH hospitals, sana magbawa, hindi naman ho ganong kabigat 'yung requirement in terms of personnel. Kasi napakahirap i-satisfy po. Your Chair, yun ano?
Response from the, uh, Director Vera?
Actually, uh, Kong Manikis is, uh, referring to the licensing requirements as to the manpower. And, uh, for this, the assurance that, uh, DOH can provide now is that, uh, there is for the reg- our regulatory office, which is the Health Facility, uh, Regulatory Bureau, they are now re, uh, they have a pending bill so that, uh, somehow they can, uh, improve the process as to how they regulate facilities. Another is that, uh, they, we, DOH recognize the limitation now of the human resource. It's true, even DOH hospitals now are having difficulty, uh, hiring and retaining the human resource because of the offer, especially for the nurses, uh, offer, uh, outside the country. So given that, uh, they're, uh, reviewing as well the ratios, the number of, uh, human resources that, uh, will be required for each hospital.
Thank you po.
Kadi bang i-clarify lang, ano? Ang ibig ba sabihin, Congresswoman, uh, Manikis, na you were given the authority to increase your bed capacity uh, and at the same time, as a result of this, 'yung kailangan ng mga tao ay sinabi rin nila kung ilan. And your problem is you are not able to hire those, uh, hos- doctors and nurses because they work for other hospitals siguro or, uh, go, go abroad. Probably, uh, siguro, that will be already an internal problem of the hospital. Uh, kumu-kumukay sa amin sa Baguio, marami kaming nurses dun, tsaka mga doktor. Kasi meron, kaya we, we will have this, uh, uh, college of medicine, uh, yu- yung, yung pinuputap ng mga iba't ibang, uh, uh, districts eh, under the, uh, 'yung pinasa natin batas, 'yung, uh, UHC, no? Kasama yun sa ano natin. Oh, oh. Kasi, I, I think the DOH, uh, cannot lower down the requirements. O pwede kayo mag-increase. Hindi naman nila pwede sabihin mag-increase kayo ng bed ng two hundred. Tapos hindi nila sasabihin na mag-increase kayo ng doctors and nurses. Eh, mahirap ang kayo kung hindi ganon eh. Uh, you will not be able to deliver the required, uh, quality service even when you don't have the necessary, uh, manpower, particularly doctors and nurses and other medical-related professionals.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Marco. So we'd like to acknowledge the presence of our Vice Chair, Honorable Peter Miguel from the Second District of South Catabato. Honorable Adrian J. Advincula from the Third District of Cavite. Uh, Honorable Patrick Michael Vargas from the Fifth District, Quezon City.
Uh, um. Mr. Chair? If.
Um, yes, Honorable Marco?
There are no more, uh, items, uh, related to these, uh, bills. I would like to move that, uh, we approve, uh, these bills. Uh, of course, we'll consolidate the, the four bills and, uh, come out with the substitute bill. And at the same time, I propose that we already approve, uh, including the committee report, uh, subject to amendments, uh, and style, uh, Mr. Chair.
Before we approve, uh, Honorable Marco, I'd like to, uh, clarify, uh, the bill is about the authority of the DOH to authorize the increase in the number of beds and the service capability. So that, that means that includes the, uh, uh, corresponding increase in health personnel, human resources.
And budget.
And budget. Okay. My, my question is, does this also include the, uh, upgrading of the hospital from level one to level two to level three?
Yes, Your Honor.
Oh.
That's included. Uh, it's a bed allocation as well as their service capability. Service capability refers to, uh, wh- what the hospital can offer. That means, uh, if there is a sort of additional requirements, if there is a certain, um, requirements for a given level, if they meet that, it's correspondingly, there will be an increase in the level of service capability.
Okay, so, uh, bed capacity and the level, uh, level of the hospital, uh, uh, and then, yeah, category, uh, category. Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Director Vera. So, uh, yes, uh, Director Vera?
Just to provide assurance to the authors of the bill, uh, there is a process at the central office in which, um, we somehow, the, basically the same process, if we propose also for the, uh, for the different bills for the increase in bed of the hospitals, meaning DOH, uh, particularly our office, the Health Facility Development Bureau is acting as the gatekeeper so that we, there are certain parameters that we look into before we allow increase in bed for, uh, the different hospitals. That's the basis as well for, uh, uh, making our technical position relative to the bills filed for these hospitals. So we also review their performance and other, uh, parameters. So there is assurance that it's not just we, we increase, uh, left and right, but there is a process, uh, being observed by the DOH.
More clarification?
Ah, yes, Honorable Hataman.
Um, I, I just realized, sir, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, will this mean, um, once this, uh, proposed measure is approved, 'yung authority, 'yung power ng Congress to file a bill or to enact or converting hospital will be transferred to, uh, the Department of Health?
That is my understanding. Uh, maybe we can ask the authors of the bill?
Uh, but that will not prevent any congressman if he wants to file a bill, uh, yes. Uh, wala namang sinasabi natin na revoking that, uh, power of Congress.
Okay.
Uh, the, the other point I would like to be assured here, if you find, for example, a hospital is one and one thousand bed capacity, do not tell us and come back to us and say, no, dapat ito eight hundred lang. You, moving forward kayo, don't, uh, touch existing hospitals. Uh, di ba, na, to lower it down. Actually, you have to help them to ensure that they meet uh, 'yung eight, one, 'yung one thousand. Okay, bayon, I would just want to be sure, Mr. Chair, because that's not the intent of this particular bill.
Definitely, Your Honor. Uh, we'll, uh, look into that. We are, we are now providing assurance that it's not, uh, going backward, but moving forward. Especially that other, more services being expected from these DOH hospitals.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just a minor, minor detail, uh, of DOH, when you say, when you increase the bed capacity, is there a minimum number of beds that is, uh, required? In other words, if you want to, uh, increase a fifty-bed capacity to one hundred bed, is it a minimum fifty or is it minimum of a hundred? Or tens?
Actually, uh, what we do is we refer to their implementing beds. The bed occupancy rate, for usually it's for the past three to five years, uh, because there is, there is some, uh, years, if there is, like, we had a pandemic, of course, they, most of them exceeded their authorized beds. So we have to, uh, also look into the historical data, but there is no, uh, certain number as to how many we compute, uh, because we also look into the, uh, their catchment, population, uh, uh, and other parameters are being considered for.
So historically, uh, usually by, uh, by fifty ba a minimum to say one thousand? Um.
Uh, actually, there is no specific number. It depends upon the computation and we just are round off that, uh, whatever we compute, but we project it so that the increase, uh, it's not just uh, the number of beds just for a given period, but rather we also, uh, project the expected number of population as well, that they need to serve.
Also, it is based on the, uh, the original bed capacity. Say if it's a fifty-bed capacity, maybe another fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Depending upon certain parameters.
Thank you, uh, Director Vera. We now, uh, act on the, uh, motion of, uh, Representative Marco, um, on the consolidation of the bill, uh, subjective style amendment. Any second? Uh, Congressman Suarez?
Second, uh, Mr. Chair.
Hmm. So there is a motion to, uh, consolidate, consolidate the, uh, one, two, three, four, consolidate and approve the, uh, five bills and, uh, uh, subject to style amendment, and come up with a substitute bill, uh, subject to style and amendment, uh, Julie seconded. So the motion is, uh, approved.
Mr. Chair? Can you request that, uh, the Congressman present be, uh, made, uh, co-authors to the said bill?
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion to, uh, include all the members of the committee present, uh, physically and by Zoom to be co-authors of the, the bills. And Julie seconded, the motion, hearing objection, the motion is carried. We now proceed with, uh, deliberation of the local bills. Uh, we go first with House Bill number one, seven, one, six, uh, by, uh, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernandez, uh, Honorable Hernandez, so you are now recognized. Honorable Hernandez, you are now recognized.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Hi, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair, and to the esteemed members of this committee, to the resource persons, sa inyo pong lahat, magandang umaga po. I sponsor and present this honorable committee, House Bill Number 1716, which seeks to convert the Bay District Hospital into a general hospital to be known as the Laguna Regional Hospital. The Bay District Hospital located in the municipality of Bay Province of Laguna is a level-one hospital under the supervision of the Laguna Provincial Government. Today, I categorically pronounce, Mr. Chair, that the current capacity of Bay District Hospital cannot sufficiently meet the ever-increasing and crucial need for healthcare services of its constituents. The province of Laguna is current, currently has nine district hospitals with a bed capacity of only 800, and this caters to about 3.5 million population of Laguna with an annual growth rate of 2.31%. In a period of four years, we already have a record of more than 10,000 referrals from Laguna government hospitals to other higher level of care and even hospitals outside the province. On the other hand, the APEX or End Referral Government Hospital in Calabarzon region is the Batangas Medical Center, or BOP MC, which is a level-three hospital under the Department of Health. Currently, Batangas Medical Center, or BOP MC, already services the whole of Mima Ropa region and the two big provinces of Laguna and Batangas. Mr. Chair and my dear colleagues, we have experienced on the ground where in my constituents either have not been accommodated or have been put in the very long waitlist just to, just to be given medical attention. May I stress that among the top three regions in the country, in terms of numbers of death due to the lack of specialized and other medical care, the Calabarzon region posted the highest rate at 14.5%, followed by NCR and Central Luzon. Calabarzon also recorded the highest number of COVID-19 deaths outside of NCR, and a major reason for this includes the lack of hospital and facilities to cater to COVID-19 patients. May I just add, Mr. Chair, that House Bill 1716 is a refiled measure approved by the House of Representatives as House Bill Number 8955 on March 25, 2021, and transmitted to the Senate of the Philippines on April 12, 2021. However, due to lack of material time, the said bill was not enacted into law. Mr. Chair, I could cite 100 more reasons of our pressing need for a level-three government-owned hospital. But from what I have already mentioned, I hope that this distinguished committee understands why this representation is in vigorous pursuit of this legislative measure. With this, Mr. Chair, may I be allowed to amend the title of House Bill 1716 to read as follows: An Act Upgrading the Bahe District Hospital in the municipality of Bay Province of Laguna into a level-three general hospital to be known as the Laguna Regional Hospital under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore. In congruence to this, Mr. Chair, may I also move to amend Section 1 of the same bill to read as follows: The Bay District Hospital in the municipality of Bay Province of Laguna is hereby upgraded into a level-three general hospital to be known as the Laguna Regional Hospital under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health. Mr. Chair, I wish for the committee's approval of this measure together with its amendments. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and to my dear colleagues, and I earnestly hope that this honorable committee gravitates towards a favorable action on this representation's proposed measure. Magandang umaga po muli sa inyo, maraming salamat po, Chairman Jun Gatto.
Thank you, Honorable Mariano Hernandez. May we hear now our comment from the Department of Health?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The Department of Health supports the intent of the proposed measure. So, at this point, the DOH will submit its recommendation to an official position paper to be signed by the Secretary of Health.
Honorable Hernandez?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I thank you again for hearing my proposed bill. And, okay, if we'll be awaiting with the position paper of the, of the Department of Health Central. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm willing to, for them, be able to maybe give to the committee their position paper. But like I've said earlier, Mr. Chair, that I earnestly pray for the approval of this bill, proposed bill. And I've said earlier, Mr. Chair, that this was already approved during the 18th Congress. It was already tackled in the plenary. So, Mr. Chair, I support that they have to release or give to our honorable committee their position paper. But notwithstanding their, their, their position, may I request the honorable committee to please act on the proposed, proposed measure of yours truly, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Hernandez. Honorable Reyes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah, I move to approve the said House Bill 1716 of Representative Hernandez, also, to include also her proposed amendments as prescribed during this committee, so move, Mr. Chair.
I accept on the motion.
There's a motion to approve House Bill Number 1716, Julie seconded. Hearing no objection, the House Bill Number 1716 is now approved.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you to my dear colleagues and to the honorable members of the Committee on Health. Thank you very much for your support in our problems, thank you.
Thank you. We now proceed with House Bill Number 1057 by Honorable Mujeeb Hataman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh, magandang umaga, dear colleagues. In the interest of time, Mr. Chair, I move that the explanatory note of the proposed measure be considered as the sponsorship speech. I sum up.
Thank you, Honorable Hataman. May we now recognize Dr. CT Nurams Sam, Si Casalin Amilasan from the Medical, Medical Center Chief from Basilan General Hospital. Please proceed.
Asalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh, good morning, Mr. Chair. So, the position paper of the Basilan General Hospital as with regards to the House Bill presented by our good honorable Representative Mujeeb S. Hataman, An Act Converting the Basilan General Hospital into a tertiary-level hospital known as the Basilan Medical Center under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health, and it's increasing its bed capacity, modernizing its services and facilities, and appropriating funds therefore. So, Mr. Chair, Basilan General Hospital has provided health services to the residents of the island province of Basilan, especially to the less fortunate populations of the province since its beginning as the integrated provincial hospital office in 1982, Mr. Chair. As a DOH retained hospital, the BGH, Mr. Chair, functions to materialize all that the DOH ambitions for the Filipinos' health and wellness. Its limited capacity as a level-two, 100-bed capacity healthcare institution, however, is reason enough, Mr. Chair, for the management and its stakeholders to work for its upgrading. This is in order to efficiently cater more patients hailing from the Basulta region and to increase and improve services offered to clientele. Thus, there shall be no need for the patients to seek medical service elsewhere than their proximity thereby minimizing costs without sacrificing quality. Hence, the management of the Basilan General Hospital together with the DOH, Mr. Chair, suggests that the House Bill by our honorable Representative Mujeeb S. Hataman should be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Casalin Amilasan from the Department of Health.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The DOH supports the increase in bed capacity and upgrading of Basilan General Hospital to be known as Basilan Medical Center. So, as long as it's provided with the DOH regulation and licensing requirements, so the upgrading and increase in bed capacity is aligned with the role of the DOH hospitals as an APEX hospital and, and referral hospital. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Director Vera. Yes, Honorable.
Well, as indicated, the Department of Health is in support of this particular measure and our regional DOH is also supporting this bill. I would like to move for the approval of House Bill 1057, An Act Converting the Basilan General Hospital into a tertiary-level hospital and increasing its bed capacity as well as modernizing its services and facilities. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's, there's a move to approve House Bill Number 1057 and Julie seconded. Hearing no objection, House Bill Number 1057 is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear colleagues.
Congratulations, the author.
Congratulations to DOH, Mr. Chair. Thank you, ma'am.
We now proceed with House Bill 4637, An Act Establishing in the City of Lucena, Quezon Province, a city hospital to be known as the Lucena City Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. Honorable David Suarez is now recognized.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Chair, members of the Committee on Health. It is my honor and privilege to present to you my proposed bill, which is the establishment of the Lucena City General Hospital. Presently, the situation in the province requires additional beds, improved healthcare services, and similar to what Vice Chairman Reyes has manifested earlier, the pandemic opened their eyes to this reality. It is the intention of this bill to establish, operate, a DOH-run hospital in the city of Lucena, which is a growing metropolis and the capital of Quezon Province. Presently, located in Lucena City is Quezon Medical Center, which is a hospital run and operated by the province of Quezon. It is a 200-bed-capacity hospital, but any given day, hindi po ba-baba sa 500, 800 na pasyente na inaadmit sa hospital na to. It is also the referral hospital of the province. So you can just imagine, not only does it cater to the constituents of Lucena City, but it caters to the whole province. Patients coming from San Andres, from Tagkawayan, from Polilya Group of Island, dun lahat din. It is also the intention of this bill, Mr. Chair, that the conversion and operation of Lucena City, sorry, the operation of Lucena City General Hospital will eventually transition to be the cancer specialty hospital of the province of Quezon. Presently, ang lalawigan po ng Quezon, ang may pinakamataas na bilang ng cancer patient sa Calabarzon. At kalungkot-lungkot pong malaman na ang mga pasyenteng nakitaan ng ganitong karamdaman ay dinadala pa sa lalawigan ng Batangas upang makatanggap ng sapat na treatment para sa kanilang karamdaman. It was narrated, narrated to me one time na isa sa mga taga Quezon, umupunta pa sa Cabrini sa Santo Tomas for 27 days, araw-araw, for a treatment that only lasts 15 days, 15 minutes. So you can just imagine that the stress that told to the patient and to the family, not only psychologically, not only emotionally, but siyempre 'yung stress sa financial nun pamilya. So, nagpapasalamat po ako, Mr. Chair, kay sa atin pong Speaker, Speaker Martin Romaldes for co-authoring the bill. I would also like to thank our Senior Deputy Majority Leader Sandra Marcos for authoring the said bill as well. As of now, I would like to thank the DOH because they are presently in the process of completing the 200 million peso funding that they have allocated for the construction of the Phase 2 of this hospital, wherein DPWH has already allocated funds for the construction of Phase 1. So, ongoing na po 'yung construction ng hospital na to. So, it would very, it would be very timely that we approve the bill so that, once the construction is complete, we can provide necessary funds for the operation of this hospital. So, Mr. Chair, it is the intention of this humble representation to seek the approval of the Committee on Health for the swift passage of this bill. Maraming, maraming salamat.
Thank you, Honorable Suarez. Before the DOH recognizes, may I would like to acknowledge the presence through Zoom, Honorable Jefferson Konghun of the First District of Sambales. Director Vera?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. So, on the DOH supports the intent of the proposed measures, measure, and but the DOH right now doesn't have its official position paper, but we will submit it once signed by the Secretary of Health.
Mr. Chair, actually, I do have a copy.
Honorable Suarez?
Yes. With the permission of her resource person, I do have a copy of the position paper of the DOH Regional Office. If you would be, if you would allow me, I can give you a copy and give our honorable resource person a copy. Basically, what the position paper says is, the DOH Calabarzon recognizes House Bill 4637, An Act Establishing in the City of Lucena, Quezon Province, a city hospital to be known as the Lucena City Hospital and appropriating funds therefore filed by Honorable David J. J. Suarez. The establishment of the said hospital shall help provide necessary specialty services to address the needs of the patients from Quezon Province, and so on and so forth. So I should submit this document to you so that you can go through it, and I would also submit the same to the Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Suarez. Yes, Director Vera?
Actually, Honorable Suarez, the DOH office who is in charge of consolidating all the position papers of the different offices has a copy already. So, as a process, just to inform the body, different offices within the DOH, including the Regional Office, is being asked to provide their respective position papers, and all of these position papers being deliberated on, and a consolidated position will be issued by the Secretary of Health once all the inputs of the different state concerned offices within the DOH has been taken into consideration.
Well, thank you very much. It seems to be the same answer as the situation of Congresswoman Ruth Hernandez earlier. So, I subscribe to the position of her resource person, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Honorable Margot.
Mr. Chair, you know, it will be a waste of resources on the part of the government if we don't approve. if we don't approve this. The building is being constructed already. So, having said that, Mr. Chair, I would like already to move for the approval of this bill, probably subject to some amendments and style, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
So, there is a move to approve House Bill Number 4637. Julie seconded, hearing no objection. House Bill Number 4637 is now approved.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Chair. Thank you very much, Congressman Marco, and to the members of the committee. Meramis salamat.
We now proceed with House Bill Number 1042, sponsored by Honorable Marivico Pilar. But since Honorable Pilar is not present, may we ask Honorable Marco to sponsor in her behalf.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I was requested by Congresswoman Pilar to present her House Bill 1042. This is an act establishing the Pasqual District Six Hospital of Quezon City in Barangay Baysa, Quezon City and appropriating funds therefore. This particular bill will address the shortage of capacity of this locality in terms of serving and providing health services to their people in that particular area. And as per provision of this bill, the local government will provide the land for the construction of the district hospital and the operating budget of this particular district hospital as proposed should be shouldered by the national government through the annual general appropriations act, Mr. Chair. So, considering that this will be a partnership between the government of the city of Quezon and at the same time of the national government, I think it's but just appropriate that we highly consider this proposal. And I would like to ask this honorable committee to approve House Bill 1042, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much and good morning.
Thank you, Honorable Marco, Department of Health, Director Vera.
Thank you, Congress Chair. The DOH acknowledges the intent of the bill and recommends further evaluation of the proposed measure. So, the DOH will submit its official position once signed by the Secretary of Health.
So, are you supporting the bill, Director Vera?
Actually, we still need to further evaluate the proposed bill. And from then, we will come up with an official position for the DOH.
Honorable Marco.
How long will you evaluate, Director Vera?
Can I refer to the office in charge of consolidating all the requests? If we will be given seven working days, your honor, we will be able to come up and issue out the official DOH position.
Yeah, pero kay la niyan?
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth, so that will be
Eight days.
Seven days from now.
Seven days from now.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Congressman Suarez.
So, December fourteenth, we are scheduled to go on our break on the fifteenth. So, given the short period of calendar days left for Congress to act on the bill, I move that, and I'm sure it isn't the best intention with the DOH, not to be supportive of the measure, to approve in principle the bill as sponsored by Congressman Marco. And then, once the DOH submits its position paper so that we can move forward with the legislative process. And if so, when the position paper does come, papasok pa naman tayo ng period of amendments. Meron pa naman tayo 'yung individual amendments sa floor. So, pwede nila natin iconsider doon 'yung magiging position ng Department of Health. So, move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
So, there is a move to approve House Bill 1042, subject to the submission of the position paper of the Department of Health and style and amendment. Julie seconded, hearing no objection. House Bill Number 1042 is now approved. We'd like to acknowledge the presence on Zoom, Honorable Joseline Tulfo of Partilist Act CIS. Thank you. We now proceed to House Bill Number 2535, an act increasing the bed capacity of Teodoro Galagar District Hospital in the municipality of Hagna Province of Bohol from seventy-five beds to one hundred beds and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable and Vice Chair Christine Alexa Chutor. Honorable Chutor, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. Mr. Chair, I would like 535 and 2598 of which explanatory note shall be the sponsorship remarks. And to add also, Mr. Chair, both of these house bills, I know that both of these hospitals are provincial hospitals and whatever increase in bed capacity and is upgrading, it will be under the provincial hospital. But the main gist of these two house bills is for the DOH to prioritize the subsidy program. So, we already approved this on the eighteenth Congress and I do hope that it will be given more priority this time in this nineteenth Congress. I so move, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Chutor. May we hear now the position or the comment from the Chief of Hospital of Teodoro B. Galagar Hospital?
That is, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please proceed. Please identify yourself.
I'm Dr. Lina Cerro, Chief of Hospital of Teodoro B. Galagar District Hospital. Our hospital is a seventy-five-bed capacity located at Publacion, Hagna, Bohol. It is strategically located between the two DOH retained hospitals, which is sixty-four kilometers away from Teodoro B. Galagar District Hospital. Our hospital is a Level One. ISO certified, nine thousand one, two thousand fifteen, quality management system. And we are a second-level referral hospital. So, we accept referrals from the RHU, from our primary hospitals, from the most of the time, nine towns of Bohol. But we also accept walk-in patients. We have two hundred twelve staff. Thirty-eight of which are permanent and eighty-six are contract of service and eighty-eight are job order. So, our bed occupancy pre-COVID, that is twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, we are eighty to one hundred twenty percent. But during COVID, we dropped to fifty to sixty percent. And in line with the DOH mandate to upgrade Level One Hospital to Level Two Hospitals, so this request, so we, the DOH, we only have one government Level Two Hospital, that is the Del Valle Hospital, and one Apex Hospital, the Galiaris Hospital. So, we have to increase the government Level Two Hospital of the province so that we can decongest the Galiaris Hospital, the regional hospital. And why one hundred bed capacity? It's because I believe that's the appropriate for this time because of our present situation. We only have fifty to sixty bed occupancy and we cannot have the big infrastructure upgrade because of our, the area is small. And although we have a five-to-ten-years-plan to acquire a lot and a five-story building for maybe three hundred bed capacity someday. And our goal for this, for the next three years, is to have a license of a Level Two Hospital so that we can upgrade our capability, especially our surgical patients. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Doctora. May we now have the comment from the Department of Health?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. So, the DOH supports the increase in bed capacity of Teodoro Galagar District Hospital from seventy-five to one hundred beds. So, the upgrading and increase in bed capacity as proposed will help close the gap for the hospital beds in the province and it will strengthen the healthcare provider network. However, since there is an increase in the, there is also on the corresponding upgrading of the services, we propose to change, to amend the title, to change it to an act upgrading the service and facilities of Teodoro B. Galagar District Hospital in the municipality of Jagna, Province of Bohol by increasing its bed capacity and upgrading and appropriating funds therefore.
Congressman Chutor, any reaction from the DOH comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we already talked with the Regional Director in Region Seven and I'm very much amenable to whatever amendments and revisions that they would like to suggest for the bill and for also for the betterment of the Teodoro Galagar Hospital, Mr. Chair. I do submit. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Chutor. Comment from the DOH on House Bill Number 2598 by, also from Honorable Chutor? 2598.
DOH also supports the increase in bed capacity of Congressman Simeon Toribio Memorial Hospital from forty beds to seventy-five beds. So, because as mentioned earlier, it will close the gap in terms of the required number of beds and will strengthen the healthcare provider network.
Thank you, Director Vera. May we hear a comment from the Chief of Hospital of Simeon Toribio Memorial Hospital? The Chief of Hospital from Simeon Toribio Memorial Hospital? Are you on board?
Mr. Chair, yung sa Toribio, Mr. Chair, we have Dr. Habonilio. She's on Zoom.
Yes, please proceed, Dr. Haronilio. Habonilio, please proceed. Naka unmute po kayo. Please unmute. We can't hear you, Dr. Habonilio. Okay. We'll get back to you once the technical glitch is solved.
Mr. Chair, can we hear from the DOH in regards with the Toribio, Cong Simeon Toribio Hospital? I do believe the Toribio Hospital would also like to, with this measure, to be also approved, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Chutor, the DOH has already given their comment, but you can, you can repeat the comment from the Department of Health.
So, the DOH supports the increase in bed capacity of Congressman Simeon Toribio Memorial Hospital from forty beds to seventy-five beds. The measure will close the gap relative to the gap in hospital beds within the province and this will strengthen as well the healthcare provider network of the province.
Mr. Chair, do we have any revisions in regards to the title of the Toribio Hospital?
Director Vera.
None so far since the measure only calls for the increase.
Honorable Chutor?
Yes, po, I have no problem, Mr. Chair. I submit to the, any amendments and revisions by the DOH. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chutor.
Mr. Chair, yes, I move to approve both House Bills 2535 and 2598, subject to the proposed amendments on House Bill 2535 as proposed by the DOH. So, move, Mr. Chair.
I check one, Mr. Chair.
So, there's a motion to approve House Bill Number 2535 and House Bill Number 2598. Julie seconded, hearing no objection. House Bill Number 2535 and House Bill Number 2598 are now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the DOH.
Thank you. We now proceed with House Bill Number 1044, an act upgrading the Bangi District Hospital in Barangay Abaca, Municipality of Bangi, in the province of Ilocos Norte, into a Level Two Hospital and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Ferdinand Alexander Marcos. Since Honorable Marcos is not around, my Honorable Suarez will sponsor in his behalf.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It is my honor to sponsor House Bill 1044 as introduced by Representative Ferdinand Alexander Marcos. In the nineteen eighty-seven Philippine Constitution provides, "The state shall adopt an integrated and comprehensive approach to health developments, which shall endeavor to make essential goods, health, and other social services available to all the people at affordable cost. There shall be priority for the needs of the underprivileged, sick, elderly, disabled women and children. The state shall endeavor to provide free medical care to poppers." Section eleven, Article eight. There is no question therefore that the provision of adequate, accessible, and affordable healthcare for everyone is one of the constitutional mandates of the state. The Bangi District Hospital in Barangay Abaca, Municipality of Bangi, in the province of Ilocos Norte, is a secondary twenty-five-bed level. is a secondary twenty-five-bed level-one hospital. It serves the health and hospitalization needs of fourteen barangays in the municipality with a population more than fifteen thousand people. No doubt, its twenty-five beds and existing manpower and facilities are increasingly inadequate to address the manifold health concerns of the citizenry. At the height of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the hospital had to limit its services due to shortages of doctors and other constitutional, institutional constraints. Patients who were not emergency cases were advised to seek treatment at the nearest health center, in their villages, or seek online consultation. Hence, we are gentee for its upgrading through this measure. In view of the foregoing, the immediate passage of this bill is earnestly sought." This is, this is Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Suarez. Uh. May we call the Chief of Hospital of the Bangi District Hospital, uh Doctor Doctor Alcoriza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to everyone and good morning to the members of this, this committee. Um, in this, uh, the position of Bangi District Hospital in behalf of it uh fully supports uh the bill that was filed by Congressman Sandro. In addition to the information, um, it, it's a level-one, twenty-five-bed hospital created at the Republic of fifty-seven twenty and started its operation July sixth, ninety-seventy-three. So we are about fifteen years old this coming year. And it is sixty-five kilometers from the nearest government hospital in the south, and that is the Government of Kedi, Blans Senior Memorial Hospital or the Provincial Hospital. And it's about eighty-four kilometers away or eighty-one kilometers to the nearest and only level-three hospital, which is the Mariano Marcos Memorial Hospital and Medical Center eh in Batak, Ilocos Norte. And we have a lot area of eleven thousand five hundred thirty-six square meters. Right now, um in addition to the exploratory note that was read by the Honorable Congressman Suarez, um aside from as it states that it services the health and hospitalization needs of the fourteen barangays in the municipality of Bangi with uh population more than fifteen thousand, we are having also five, uh four other catchment municipalities as well, namely Borgos, Pagudpod, Adams, and Dumalneg. So that the combined estimated population of the five catchment municipalities is fifty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-three as of twenty-twenty-two, including the forty-six barangays with twelve thousand nine hundred ninety-six households. So we are the only hospital in the far northern part of Ilocos Norte, and we also have an extension hospital twenty kilometers away in the far north of Pagudpod, uh Municipality of Pagudpod. It's a four-bed hospital, and we are just being referred here. So it is high time as well um for this upgrading as in our statistics, from twenty-seventy to twenty-nineteen, we have a bed occupancy rate of one ten percent to one hundred thirty-seven percent and declined from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one because of COVID-nineteen. So in regards to this, we fully support this, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Alcoraz, Alcoriza, uh from the Department of Health, Director Vera.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the DOH supports the upgrading of Bangi District Hospital uh with its increase in bed. However, may we request that section five be reviewed because it stated there that the local government of Bangi will be the one providing the funds. Uh, as far as we know, it should, it's uh the province who is supposed to uh operate the, buy funds for the operation of the uh District Hospital.
Thank you, Director Vera. Um. Uh, Honorable Reyes.
Um, yeah, Mr. Chair, having no other um comments, uh I move to approve uh House Bill one zero four four uh subject to uh the proposed uh amendments or insertions as uh provided by the DOH.
Any say?
Second, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion to approve uh House Bill number one zero four four. Um, Julie seconded. Uh, hearing no objection, House Bill number one zero four four uh is now approved, subject to style and amendment and the uh uh the comment from the Department of Health on uh section five of the uh proposed bill. We now proceed with House Bill number one four eight two uh by uh an act increasing the bed capacity of the Laguna Provincial Hospital, San Pedro District Hospital in the city of San Pedro Laguna from thirty-five beds to fifty beds and appropri, appropriating funds therefore by uh Representative uh Maria Rene Ann Lourdes Matibag. But since uh Honorable Matibag is not around, uh Congress, Congressman Reyes uh will now sponsor in her behalf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So uh on behalf of Representative Matibag, it is uh my honor that I sponsor uh House Bill one four eight two and specify that it is the app increasing the bed capacity of the Laguna Provincial Hospital in San Pedro District Hospital in the city of San Pedro Laguna from thirty-five beds to fifty beds and appropriating funds therefore. And I humbly uh submit that the explanatory note be its uh sponsorship speech. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Reyes. Uh, Director Vera.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the DOH supports uh the proposed increase in bed of Laguna Provincial Hospital from thirty-five beds to fifty beds.
Thank you, uh Director Vera. Uh, any comment from the members of the committee? Honorable Reyes?
Having no other uh comments, uh so with that, Mr. Chair, I move that uh we approve uh House Bill number one four eight two. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion to approve House Bill number one four eight two. Uh, Julie seconded. Um, hearing no objection, House Bill number one four eight two is now approved, uh subject to style and amendment. Uh, we now proceed to the last, but not the least. House Bill number nine six eight by Honorable uh Rufus Rodriguez. Uh, this is an act establishing in Barangay Tablon, Kagayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, a satellite district hospital of the Northern Mindanao Medical Center to be known as the Barangay Tablon Northern Mindanao Medical Center Satellite District Hospital and appropriating funds therefore, um by Honorable Rufus Rodriguez. Um. Honorable Rufus Rodriguez is not around, so may we now uh recognize uh Honorable Larno Oke to sponsor in his behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, in behalf of Representative Rufus Rodriguez, may I sponsor his House Bill number nine sixty-eight and act establishing in Barangay Tablon, Kagayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, a satellite district hospital in the Northern Mindanao Medical Center to be known as the Barangay Tablon Northern Mindanao Medical Center Satell, Satellite District Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. The bill had, was filed during the eighteenth Congress and was approved by the House of Representatives. Section eleven, article thirteen of the nineteen eighty-seven Philippine Constitution provides "The state shall adopt an integrated and comprehensive approach to health development which shall endeavor to make essential goods, health, and other social services available to all the people at affordable cost." "While there are several private hospitals in Kagayan de Oro City, many patients could not afford to secure medical services from the said hospitals, and many of them would go to the government-owned Northern Mindanao Medical Center or NMMC. However, there is now an overcrowding of patients in the said hospital." "Mr. Chair, I am actually um from the district four of Bukit Non, and most of our constituents actually go to this hospital. This is like um more than three hours of travel for my constituents, which is why uh I therefore, there is a need for a satellite, satellite hospital in the second district of Kagayan de Oro City." Um, to be located at the center of the district, which is Barangay Tablon. This will make the medical services available near my constituents and the constituents, of course, of Kagayan de Oro City, and unclog the overcapacity of the NMMC. "In view of the foregoing, immediate passage of this bill is earnestly requested, Mr. Chair. Thank you."
Thank you very much, uh Honorable Oke. Um, Director Vera.
Uh, thank you, uh Honorable Chair. The DOH supports the establishment of Barangay Tablon Northern Mindanao Medical Center as a satellite hospital. Uh, but we have reservation of it being a satellite hospital because uh what we propose is uh to have the hospital as a separate uh hospital. So uh in our experience, if it's a satellite hospital, it will deplete the resources of the um parent or mother hospital. So we support the intention, however, it should not be a satellite hospital, but rather uh a stand-alone hospital, meaning separate from, not attached to Northern Mindanao.
Thank you, uh Director Vera.
Okay, yeah, so uh, yeah, with that, Mr. Chair, I do uh move that we approve um House Bill number nine six eight uh subject to the proposed amendments of the Department of Health. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
So there's a motion to approve uh House Bill number nine six eight. Uh. Julie seconded, hearing no objection, House Bill number nine six eight uh is now approved. Subject to style and amendment. Before we uh adjourn, may we uh request the uh DBM, Madam Nihal, to please uh submit the uh position, your position on the, all the uh local deals. Uh.
Yes, Your Honor. We have, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Honorable Reyes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh I move that uh all committee members present here be uh meet co-authors to all the approved uh bills during this committee meeting. So move, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion to uh include all the members of the committee present physically and on Zoom to be co-authors of the, all the local bills uh approved uh this morning. Uh, Julie seconded, hearing no objection, the uh motion is approved. Favorite motion?
Yeah, so uh, having no other matters, Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
So, there's a motion to adjourn, Julie seconded, hearing no objection, the meeting uh is now adjourned. Thank you very much, um Director Vera, Madam Nihal, and all our esteemed guests. Thank you very much, uh members of the committee for your presence.